I guess I have a question. Have we decided that we want to put, that we're going to put artificial turf on Bonita Park? I don't think we made a decision on that, have we?
Remember, that's Bonita Creek Park, not Bonita Canyon Park.
This is Bonita Creek Park, right?
Yeah, I know.
We had decided to do that.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Laura Detweiler, Director of Recreation and Senior Services. We actually had completed that synthetic turf study, but it was Bonita Creek that we had identified for the park that would go first if we were to do that.
Okay. I know this item's been pulled. I guess I'm just asking if it makes any sense for us to think about using this excess money for artificial turf and keeping the money. So would you please think about that between now and the next agenda item?
I have no items. Councilmember DeGel, do you have items for clarification?
I think you might be touching on item four.
Yes.
Which I also wanted to address and just to better understand the boundaries with that one. That was presented to us at the Finance Committee. You know, some portion of that money was going to go to the school district and, of course, I was wondering if perhaps what latitude we may have to make improvements on city-owned property.
Well, you're looking at me and the reason why it's pulled is because we didn't have a chance to review it. So my answer is, I don't know. I apologize, but we just didn't get it in time to be able to get to it. So we'll have that better understood by the time we bring it back to your next agenda.
When we bring that back, if I remember correctly, in that agreement, there was a, something related to after a period of time, or up until a period of time, and I think it was 10 years, and we're approaching that, the school district would make a decision of whether or not they were going to have that as a school site. And I think that we need to make sure that we are aware of that and when the magic time comes, make a statement that, okay, we've waited long enough and we don't, we don't need to consider that any longer.
Yeah, we can look at that issue as well as the potential of the use of funds, but know, though, that the school district already has designated what they see as their share for parking improvements at Coronado High School. Side issue from what Don is talking about, but worth talking about, sure.
Sounds like I stepped on a landmine here, but, you know, think about it.
Well, it is, the funds are coming from the, I don't know, Melrose District or whatever it is, which is Bonita Canyon, and if you tie that into Coronado High School as related to that's where the students are going is one thing, but as far as tying that into another park, that's perhaps a little bit of a stretch. I don't know.
Okay, well, I guess staff will figure that out between now and when he comes back. I did have one other quick item. I did have a series of questions regarding item S-12, which staff was kind enough to answer. And my only comment about that is I appreciated the responses and that were very helpful. I just did want to note that it's been quite a while since we've reviewed our broker relationship. I only view this as an example of the fact that we are in an environment right now where we need to turn over all rocks that haven't been turned over in a while. And so where we do have longtime relationships that have sort of rested undisturbed for a long period of time, just as a matter of policy, in my view at least, it's a good idea to test those relationships. And I don't mean to apply that just with the broker agency, which appears to me to be a good relationship. I just think it's a good business practice. So I'll just let the comment go for that and if you want to respond, Dave, fine, but otherwise.
Your point's well taken, Mayor Bertem, and also Lauren was going to make a brief comment on pricing because there's been a pricing change. It went down. I thought at least that should be on the record. Lauren, you back there?
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Yes, pricing did come down another almost $20,000, exactly $19,507. In addition to that, we have secured multi-year quotes for the master property of two years. So we've got a two-year on the master property and we got a three-year on the watercraft policy. So we have squeezed the rocks and we have beat them pretty well down and they have responded quite nicely for us. So we've gotten some very good numbers and we're very pleased.
Well, that's a good comeback.
Thank you. Mr. Rosansky, did you have any clarification items from the consent calendar?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is recognition of Community Youth Center crew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. About once a quarter now, I try to spend a little bit of time honoring some hard work and extraordinary effort by some of our employees. And with that, I'd like to tell you and the public briefly the story of the Community Youth Center. And then a conclusion of that, I'd like maybe the staff members who are here, and I'll call their names, to come on up and take a picture with the mayor and we'll post that on our website. And then they get lunch on me and there's a lot of them this time, so I think we're having top ramen or we're going to Norm's. We'll do something.
I hear Denny's is having free Grand Slam.
There we go.
Get in the Jack in the Box today.
That's true, that's true. We got to do this, keep, maybe Cappy's.
Free is okay in Costa Mesa, Don. There's no sales tax on free.
So the Community Youth Center is in Coronado High and it was renovated. It included a complete remodel of the interior and exterior of the building and the parking lot. The renovation was done to address safety issues within the building and the parking lot as well as addressing the acoustics within the facility. And now that it's done, the facility has received a lot of good compliments and kudos from the parents, kids, and adults and seniors who utilize the building on a daily basis. And since the opening of the facility, its reopening, revenue has gone up by $20,000 per quarter. So we're getting a lot of good new use from the CYC. And we think it's now set up and equipped to retool to serve the residents well into the 21st century and is now an important gathering point for folks in Coronado High. So the staff here today, I'm going to call them up, worked as a project team from Public Works, General Services, and Recreation to complete the remodel. So that is Fong Si, Mike St. Clair, why don't you come up when I, when, call your name, Dan Serino, Paul Ramirez, Tom Diaz, Matt Lor, Jessica Vincent, Jim Skahan, Jeremy Gordick, and Sean Levin. So if you wouldn't mind coming up and then Mayor, it will take a picture. And if any councilmembers have seen the facility and enjoyed it, please chime in, hopefully.
I have seen it since it's in my district and I cannot tell you how responsive staff has been. We had a last minute issue on landscaping with some trees and we quickly solved it. I mean, staff just got right out there and solved it. The exterior landscaping is gorgeous and inside, parents can now watch their kids. It's a great window for activities, which always makes it fun, particularly when you've got the little ones. It's beautiful. It's, I don't know if it's maybe not quite as glamorous as Newport Coast Community Center, but it certainly is a great new addition to, it is upgrade to Coronado High. We're very happy with it.
I too have visited the site and have noticed that quite an active usage and have made at least one suggestion which Laura has, I hope, worked on implementing and I think that it's a great asset to the community.
Thank you, councilmembers. And I'd note, too, the project came in within the budget parameters and on time, so that was good news for that project.
Congratulations to all concerned. Great facility. The next item is our budget briefing. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Finance Director Tracy McCrainer and I are smiling apart out of angst because I loaded something on the computer after they had set it up and the computer appears to have jammed up on us. I don't, that's no indication of our budget times.
You're not asking for a new computer.
Well, we're actually proposing changing the computer replacement timeline, so. So we're going to spend potentially the next hour, that's what we have allocated on this item because it's a pretty important one to discuss with you. I'm going to start the presentation briefly and then Tracy is going to go through what I, what I call the problem part of the situat, of the, of the presentation. And then I'll look more at the solution side of things. So if you're looking at it and thinking problem after problem, please wait, we do have solutions. So your questions are always welcome, but if you wanted to hold off till the end, I think that is, we'll answer a number of questions by the time we get to the solutions part. So with that, I'd also note, too, for the public at home, that our presentations will be put on the website. Lot of charts, little bit data-heavy, we're going to try to go through those fairly quickly. So folks at home are welcome to look at that. And then you also have copies in front of you. There's two of them. There's Tracy's part has the dollar signs on it, mine has the bridge on it, bridging a budget gap, so.
That's not me jumping off the bridge there.
Actually, I don't think so, yeah. I think you'd land safely, too. It's not that high, as you know.
You took out the Golden Gate Bridge.
We did. We thought we'd have something a little bit closer to home, so.
A more beautiful bridge.
If anybody doesn't recognize it, it's the Balbo Island Bridge.
That's right.
Yes, it is. We felt that was important to bring something home, bridging us, bridging us to the solution. Do you want me to start?
So let me reintroduce to you Tracy McCrainer, our Finance Director, Admin Services, Admin Services Director.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me the time to present this second update. We were at the Finance Committee and got a lot of valuable input from that committee and I'll try to go through this quickly, but as Dave said, if you have questions, please let me know. I'll go ahead and start on the first presentation for anybody here. It's this one. We actually only made a few copies to save money and we will have it on the website. And then as Dan gets the computer up and running, we'll flip to the, to the presentation.
No pressure.
Okay. Well, what we want to start about is the current deficit. And what is it? How did we get here? Go over the details of how we got here and then Dave gets the lucky part of saying, well, what are we going to do about it? Current deficit is what we call a structural deficit. And really, a simple way to explain that is that our revenue structure, as we see going forward over the next five years, is not sufficient to maintain our operating service levels and our capital projects needs. Oh, great job. Going over for multiple years. And although we do have revenue growth starting in 2012, here we go. Whoops. Oh, wait, this is the wrong one. That's the February 8th, sorry. Okay, well, we'll be working on it. Dan's getting even with me for making him stay late and help me with this. But the bottom line is, our gap is about $8 million for 2010. That is after our E-RIP savings of a half a year of about $1,005, $1,008. And for 2011, it's almost $12 million. This includes some extraordinary expenses and we'll go over the breakdown of that. And the bottom line is, we do need a plan, we do have a plan, and that's what we'll be wrapping up the presentation with today. Well, how did we get here? Dave and I were talking about this and there's a lot of factors and it's not that it was unforeseen. We actually started taking corrective action in 2009 with a 1% budget cut, 2010, a 2% budget cut. So we have been planning for it. It's not like an aha, here it is. It's just that it's gotten worse than we'd expected, especially the revenue decline. Our area is also very blessed. There we go. Thank you, Dan. Okay. Our area is very, is very blessed and we were a little later into this great recession that the national economy is experiencing. But overall, cities themselves across the nation typically lag the national economy low points by almost two years, just because of the timing of our revenue collections, mostly property taxes makes up almost half of our general fund. And the National League of Cities has estimated that for all cities typically, 2011 is going to be the worst of the worst. And that is in line with the projections that we're going to go over today. Other impacts to governments are much more severe than Newport Beach, but as you can see, $8 million is still significant. So while it's not as bad as most of our other neighbors, it is still significant to us. And in coming with the recession, also dovetails some significant expenses that were beyond our control, most notably the CalPERS loss from 2008. Had a 25%, almost 25% loss on our invested pension assets. So we had a market value of about $500 million and an almost 25% loss equals $125 million. Well, we've got to pay that over an actuarially, you know, assumed rate of over a 30-year period. But as you can see, some, by 2014, our pension costs, just because of the loss, is going to go up $6 million, which again is significant to our city. Also in that, we have some extraordinary one-time needs for tidelands projects, the Rhine Channel, the lower Newport Bay dredging. These are like once every 70-year projects and guess what? We got the grant funding projected for 2011. That also goes along with the worst year that we're projecting over the next five years. So it's kind of a combination of a lot of factors. And then as, my team was here in October and we were estimating a revenue shortfall of about $5.8 million. That has worsened in just the last three months. It's estimated now at about $7.3 million of a shortfall and that's almost primarily as a result of reduced sales tax information that we didn't receive till December. So where do I get the $8 million and the $12 million? For the second revised quarter estimate, 2.5 is the contribution we made to our facilities' financing plan this year. In prior years where revenues were good, we were able to make that contribution out of excess revenues. This year, we had to take it out of fund balance. Our revenue decline that I talked about, it's estimated at $7.3 million. That was the number that was estimated at 5.8 back in October. And then we've given ourselves the credit for a half of a year of E-RIP savings, so it still leaves us with this $8 million hole, or budget gap. For 2011, our facilities' financing plan increased, our contribution increased, our revenues got a little bit better, and then we get a full year of E-RIP savings, but you can see that tidelands, that $4 million. We're going to be getting a grant and we're obligated to match it for, by that $4 million. So again, something unique and not common, but just coming in a bad year. So that puts us at 12. What you'll notice here is I don't have any operating expenditure details. As part of Dave's plan, you'll see that we are getting together, all departments are coming to the table with more savings. We're working on that right now. So our next update will have 2010 and 2011 operating budget savings. So it's going to be part. So this is really just if expenditures were flat compared to 2009, what are we looking at? And then in 2012, that's when our pension costs are going to start going up because of the actuarial losses on our pension assets. It's only $700,012, but as you can see, it quickly goes up $6 million by '14. But that is the allocation of that $125 million investment loss from 2008. So we wanted to kind of let you know in a glance, what kind of assumptions are we making for our revenues, just so that you're aware? And for, and then what are the dollar amounts associated with those either projected increases or decreases? For this year, and these are our three main revenue sources, they make up about 71% of the general fund. Property tax is actually going to come in positive compared to 2009. We'll go over a detailed property tax slide, but that's actually a lot lower than we usually get. But we are coming in about 2.28%. We are projecting a big decrease next year, which I'll go over on the property tax slide. And property taxes are number one revenue source, so that kind of swing makes a big difference for us. Sales taxes are really coming in hard. Actually, our worst quarter was a negative 16%. We're just slightly above the county and the state averages and we'll go over those details on the slide. But that negative 11% is almost a $5 million hit for us this year as far as our revenue shortfall. And then TOT is severely hit. Our residential TOT is actually coming up and kind of saving us. Our hotels are experiencing anything from a 15 to a 25% decline compared to 2009. And even 2009 was a decline from '08. But again, we, we really feel that this year for sales tax and TOT is probably more of the worst year and we've built in some slight modest growth, which is in line with our consultants and from other state and national economic indicators.
See, Tracy?
Yes.
To me, I would think almost 6% in 10, 11 is.
You think that's high?
I think it's high.
The reason.
I'm in the retail business and I would love to see, I'd love to see flat at this point.
For 11? Well, just to let you know, we're actually conservative compared to what our consultants and the state LAO's office is saying. They're actually estimating eight. And by, by all indicators, this 10%, and we'll go over those slides, too, and we can discuss that. But this is the exact kind of discussion that we wanted to have today. The 6% is actually coming online with a new Nordstrom and just customer, you know, consumer confidence. And we actually put it quite a bit lower than other indicators and our consultant has even said, but we can definitely talk about that.
Yeah. I'd rather be conservative.
I agree. I agree. What we wanted to kind of give is an overall view. Again, our expenditures have only been adjusted, not by salary increases, no CPI, but our expenditures here, just to give you kind of a visual, these are our actual, revenue is green, expenditure is red. These are our actual excesses in past years. Last year, we were pretty much flat. We came in a little bit higher. We were able to increase fund balance by about half a million dollars. But as you can see, going forward, we've put in modest revenue growth, being conservative, but we think responsible. And these expenditure grows are really just a factor of increased facilities financing plan contributions, increased pension costs, and the increased tidelands. It also incorporates all the savings from E-RIP. So we're just kind of giving a visual for really kind of what our long-term issues are before we even think of addressing things like the salary or CPI adjustments.
So Tracy, this chart again is before any changes that we would make this year and next.
Yes. This is before corrective action. And just to kind of go over our major revenue elements, property tax, sales tax, TOT makes up 71%, so our three big major revenue sources. And then what we have added since Finance Committee is a slide of everything else and we're going to kind of talk about what we project for those. This is a 25-year graph of our property values. As you can see, back in the 90s, same thing happened, you know, early 90s. Even though this recession is much more severe and we've gone down a little bit, we are projecting, and this is, we met with the county assessor and it was, it was a county-wide meeting, and property values for the first time since 1978 are going to be assessed with a negative CPI for 2011. That's why we show such a big decline in 2011. And that CPI adjustment is given to the counties by the State Board of Equalization. So it's, usually they're capped at increasing our values by 2%. It's 2% or whatever's lower. Well, when it's a negative, they are actually going to give a negative .24% adjustment to all property, all property values countywide. So when we look at our property values, that's just on, it's on all values, but we're starting out with a negative .25 versus a normal, like a 2% growth is what we started out with for this fiscal year.
So that, is that some kind of a state requirement in the Prop 13 legislation?
It is. It's in the Prop 13 and it says whenever there is CPI, you're maxed at the 2%, or capped at the 2%. But if there's ever a negative CPI, and for 2009, it's the first time we've had a negative CPI, I think he says, since 1978.
And it's directly equal to the negative CPI? Is that how it works?
I don't know how they calculate it. It is, it's different than CPI because I've heard that the Consumer Price Index CPI is actually a negative .4, I believe, for 2009. It does have a different year. For some reason, they use October end numbers at the state's office and I'm sure they make other adjustments for property or real estate-related purposes, but that's the percentage they're coming up with.
So you're saying property values are going to drop one quarter of 1%? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's the quarter percent on assessed value. The assessed values themselves will go down a quarter percent.
They're going to drop it a quarter of 1%?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Is this going to apply to all properties, including pre-Prop 13 properties? It's every piece of property across the board?
Yes. Every property in the state.
No matter what.
No matter when it was purchased or sold.
That is not otherwise assessed, reassessed?
Right. There could be additional assessments on top. So any property that we sell that maybe hasn't been sold since, say, the 70s or 80s will be a winner. It will still get reassessed at its market value now, but to begin with, the assessment will start with a negative .24.
So just to raise one other point and consistent with a comment that Steve made a little earlier, if you look back in 1991 and, let's see what we got here. Yeah, well, we see in '93, '94, and '94, '95, assessed valuations actually were in the negative range.
Right.
And you'll note that there was actually two years in negative territory before they popped back up. We're showing ours popping back up after one year in negative territory with no, with no, with no reduction in the slope of that line. And so, you know, we can argue all day long about what's conservative and what's not, but I wouldn't want anyone to argue that this is too conservative a picture when we're looking at our prior experience here.
Right. And they, and it does happen in cycles and it is consistent. And again, the reason we're going back up, a number of indicators, you know, we are blessed with a great base and our consultant, and we're blessed with a very good payment rate. I mean, I think our delinquency rate is like .5%. So I think it's reasonable. Our consultant was actually thinking we could go back to the 4% and we said no. And I think Finance Committee really summed it up well. Unless you can really see some actual improvement, we don't want to go too crazy on the positive side and make a five-year plan based on that.
If the property tax assessments are only going to drop a quarter of 1%, why are we projecting it then to go down 1 and 3/4%?
That's a good question. That's for all properties is the .24%, but all of the other elements within property tax, like unsecured property transfer tax and reassessments, we've, just kind of looking at our trends for all the other values, they bring it down to actually a 1.5% rate for the total year. So that .24% is just a portion of the decrease that we're expecting. We're also expecting some more reassessments. About 20% of our multifamily and, or a single, single-family and condos were reassessed during 2009 and the property assessor feels that there's going to be an even bigger request for reassessment.
Okay.
What about boats and aircraft? What percentage of the property tax is added? Is it anything that's significant?
I don't think it's significant, but I can let you know that unsecured. I can get back to you on that. I'm not really, I don't have that detail.
Are you thinking about decrease?
No. What percentage is unsecured property tax of our entire property tax?
Like of all of this property tax.
Does this same decrease factor apply to that or is it just still up to the assessor to determine?
No.
Negative 20. We're looking at unsecured for a longer term.
Negative 20?
Yeah, but what, what?
Two of 70, two, two.
Two million?
Two of 70 million, so.
So negligible.
It's a small piece, yeah. And then this just kind of shows actuals for the past four years and their percent changes. So we've had very good steady growth. We've always budgeted at about 4% a year and in many years, we've come above that. This is our estimate for this year and it's much better than most municipalities around us. Yes, listen.
Sorry if you mentioned this already. Now, I understand there's also a reassessment of about 20% of attached homes, too. And my question is, can we monitor the pipeline of reassessment requests? Do we sort of understand what the exposure is?
We can and our consultant works with the county assessor's office to see how specifically our city is impacted by those reassessment requests. They also made a comment that they're really going after commercial reassessments, but our consultant said we were hit with that big a couple of years ago, so we're not going to see the impact of that negative, that negative reassessment for the coming year. And just, just to see, so this 1.51, it includes the .24, but again, all of the other different elements and components of property tax. And then we're showing a modest growth, again, going along with the economy. It's a, it's a modest growth, but until we can actually see a couple of years of actuals, we felt this was a conservative yet reasonable projection.
Tracy, before we go any further, could you go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
Because I wonder if we misnamed this and I think it's something we need to look at and get back to the council on. I wonder if this is a 25-year pattern of our property tax receipts, not of assessed property value.
You know, I think you're right, Dave, because I did look at this information once before, a year, a year and a half ago, and it, and I believe it was property tax receipts.
Okay. Because that might, that, that changes that dip down there because that would have been when E-RAF, not E-RIP, the state's initial shift in property tax would have occurred. So it'd be interesting to see what indeed happened to assessed property values during that time. So we'll, we'll give you a couple of new slides on this.
Okay.
If that's the case.
Yeah, we can do that. But I, you are right, that is our actual receipts. Okay, now, sales tax, our second highest revenue. We've really been hard hit. This was the number one reason why our $5.8 million one reason why our $5.8 million decrease went to 7.3. As you can see, by quarter, the past year and a quarter, our worst quarter was the first quarter of 2009. We were at 18 percent down compared to the year before, slightly better than Orange County and the state throughout, but still significantly down. We have been noticing a turn-up, and I know Councilwoman Rosansky was mentioning, she's kind of concerned about that. But we have seen a couple quarters of improved, although there are still decreases, improvements, and we're projecting to stay at about this negative 11 by the end of the year. Our consultants are actually trying to encourage us to go a little higher on that. But we can, we can definitely talk, because our, next year, as you can see, we are at 5.9. But another thing that this will help us point out, that 5.9 is just compared to 2010. So it's not like a 5.9 percent increase off 2008 or '09. It's actually just an increase off this, you know, big dip. So, you know, even though it seems like a big increase as far as, as far as dollars, I, I think it's still reasonable with the comeback of the economy. Wanted to point out that in 2009, oh, sorry.
So Tracy, how much below quarter three in 2008 is the 5.9 increase over 2010? There's a 0 percent baseline. How much below that baseline is that 5.9 percent increase?
Um, gosh, Dan, do you know that?
Over 2008?
Over, oh, you're, so of, of the negative 11, it would be just a 5.9 percent above that negative 11. So it would still be-
And the dollar fall from, what, 21.8 million to-
To-
16.5 for 2011 projected.
Yeah, it's actually probably a little more than. I think you need to accumulate sales and lieu as well as sales tax.
Yes, oh, you're right.
If you look at it that way, it's, it's more like 7, 8 million dollars of decline.
Down here, yeah. The combination of both of those. One other thing I did want to bring to your attention is in 2009, we've restated these numbers from actuals, because the state came back and told us they overpaid us in 2009 by 1.2 million, and they took that away in 2010. So we do have the right to, you know, appeal and ask for the audit records, which we will do, but they, they usually have it pretty well documented. We're going to follow up on that. But that was even, if you restated 2009 numbers to remove the 1.2, they said they overpaid, 2009 noticed an almost 19 percent drop compared to 2008. TOT is our third major revenue source. Again, kind of in line with sales taxes. You, you see these decreases a lot faster in the economy, because people are staying, you know, going away less. Hotels are actually, occupancy is, is up, but they're charging less. So to motivate people to come and stay in our city, so while the occupancy rates are up, the revenue base is not going up.
Although I, I did sit down for lunch with Gary Sherwin yesterday, and he showed me their December and January numbers. Now understandably, we had the BCS group here, so that was a good thing. But the overall revenue coming in per room is, is higher. It's trending back up in a nice way. So I don't know that we can build, base a trend on that, but it's certainly a better sign than the other way.
And I think that is consistent with, with what we're noticing in the economy. Again, not wanting to get ahead of ourselves or too optimistic, but we have built in, you know, whoops, sorry, modest increases for 2011, '12 going on, 3 to 4 percent is, is conservative and very typical for us to build a budget around. What happened that kind of helped save us actually at the end of 2009 was the opening of Pelican Hill. So as you can see, in 2010, we had a lot of early collections within the fiscal year that weren't available this year. So our drop from nine to 10 doesn't look as bad, because Pelican Hill opened. But as we're getting into the December and January timeframe, where we have a month to compare in 2009, even Pelican Hill was, was down a little bit from their opening months of November and December. Again, though, I think we built in this modest increase, the 4 to 3 percent, and, and the dollar amounts with it. What, the Finance Committee asked us, we went over the three major revenues, and they said, well, what about everything else? You know, we've increased fees, and, and, you know, where is that? And so we have a slide here. This is everything else in the general fund. It's, it's other taxes, like franchise fees, but it's predominantly park fees, building permit fees, fire inspection fees, police fees, all of our charges for services. And total, all of these other revenue sources make up the remaining 29 percent of the general fund. And they have just been very hard-hit by the economy. Just for instance, our plan checking and construction inspections are down half a million. Licenses and permits revenue is down a little over half a million. Our investment income, our basically interest earnings is down, you know, in 2009 and again in 2010. So all of these play a role, and so this makes up another almost couple million dollars of our $8 million shortfall that we're, or budget cap that we're looking at this year. So what have we done? In our expenditure forecast assumptions that we've given the departments, we've already built in the program savings for E-RIP. It's about 3 million a year. We're confirming that as the departments are turning in all of their 2011 budget items for us, we're confirming that those, that 3 million is in fact a reality. Our purse costs have gone up because of those investment losses. Those are the, we've built in the 700,000, starting 2012, going up to 6 million in 2014. Our facilities financing plan has been updated, and this represents our most recent projections for contributions that we'll need to make for that facilities financing plan. We have assumed no salary increases at this time. Again, this is all before any corrective actions have taken place. We've assumed no CPI at this time for MNO. We did increase the subsidy for those unique opportunities by 4 million for the Rhine Channel project and the Lower Newport Bay dredging. Another slide we wanted to show is our retirement contributions. As you can see, they're significantly increasing. And what this is, Finance Committee had asked us, well, of, of the total amount we pay in pension costs, how much does the city pay versus what the employee pays? Basically, everything in green is the employer contribution. That little red area is the amount that the miscellaneous unions are picking up now, that 3.42 percent started in 2008. And that is the, that's the actual amount in 2009, and are projected for 10 going forward. And then the blue amount is what the city pays on behalf of the employees. So the 9 percent for the safety units, and the remainder for whatever, the 8 percent, the, the remainder of, of what the employees and the miscellaneous groups aren't picking up. So as you can see, our, you know, expenses are going up, and the employees are helping with that. But I did a calculation for 2010, our total was 20,970,000, and the employee portion made up about 7.6 percent of that.
At this point, the blue doesn't reflect any changes in the MOUs that we're negotiating now?
No changes that are currently under discussion.
Okay, thank you.
You know, Tracy, I'm glad you added those numbers up. It's 21 million dollars.
We were having a hard time with the 3.42. And, you know, just to kind of put it in context, I was reviewing the actuarial report. The 2011 rates for the miscellaneous employer contribution is 8.4, the employees 10.42, but the safety employer contribution is 30 percent, and the safety employee contribution is 9. So I mean, that kind of puts it in perspective between the two plans. This is the combination of both miscellaneous and safety.
So the, the comparison that jumps off the page here is it's $21 million in 2010. It was about $12 million in 2005. That's a $9 million increase in the, in the course of five years. And then when you add up 2012, you know-
Exactly.
It's so, it's, it's, or 13, I guess 14 is where we are, because that's where the full impact of-
That, that's the 6 million. Now, when we get our next about valuation dated June 30, '09, which unfortunately, they don't give us till September of '10, you know, that could go up again. It might be offset with better investment activity for our assets, but also they're talking about changing assumptions, and, and there's a lot of different actuarial assumptions that go into that valuation, so it could go up again. So this impact is just the investment loss impact that we got from the actuary.
Yeah, so it's one thing to talk in terms of percentages, but you don't take percentages to the bank, you take dollars to the bank, and these dollars are really huge increases.
Exactly. And, but I would like to state, the city is always paying its required contribution. Many, many cities don't do that. It's very, it's a very sound fiscal policy, and it keeps us from having that net pension obligation on our books. So for what it's worth, it is growing, but we have consistently budgeted and paid that full contribution.
When you speak of 30 percent, can you clarify 30 percent on what? Can you explain a little bit more?
It's a percentage to covered payroll. So for the safety employees, that's the percentage that we are paying on behalf of the safety employees as a percentage against total covered payroll.
In other words, if we have a million dollars payroll, we're paying $300,000 in the, in the-
Yes. And that's just the employer share. There's another 9 percent we pay. So another, you know, $90,000 would go for the employee, and then you have the miscellaneous group at, you know, they're 18 percent. So as a-
As far as safety is concerned, you're saying that out of a million dollars-
300,000 is-
90,000 dollars is going towards payments. For the miscellaneous employees, out of a million dollars-
It's 18 percent, 180,000.
180,000 is going.
So yeah, when you, when you add them up together, it's almost 600,000 of the million.
Just to follow up on a comment you just made about other cities not paying their full contribution.
Park, right.
Just say down the road, 10 or 15 years, and, you know, let's say there are cities that don't pay their full contribution. How does that affect us?
Well, us, it, it just shows that we're just fiscally stronger and, and more conservative.
No, I mean from a dollars and cents standpoint. I mean, are we still fully funded, or do we have to somehow make up their, their end of it?
We're not fully funded. No, they don't, other cities don't impact our payment at all.
Will our employees be protected? Will they for sure get their pensions? Or, or could their pensions be in jeopardy because other cities don't fully fund?
No. Other decisions that other cities make have no impact on our assets at all. We're completely separate within the CalPERS pool. We have our own asset value base, and, and we're not impacted by any other decisions from other cities, only our own.
Okay, thank you.
And, and then I just did want to bring up, I mean, these are significant numbers we're talking about. We have a huge gap, and Dave's going to talk about the plan. But we were making strides to, to help this, and it did get worse than we expected. But I, I didn't want to leave without saying that we have made some really good fiscal decisions in the past. Back in 2009, we saw what the economy was doing. We are blessed. It wasn't impacting us as quick as a lot of our neighbors, but we were still making, you know, the million-dollar budget reduction. That equals about a million five. I mean, so, I mean, at that time, that was a big cut for us. In 2010, we made a 2 percent reduction. We, we instituted that going forward for 2011. So that's a $3 million reduction. We've looked at the capital improvement program. We had a hiring freeze. The E-RIP was an excellent program. Cost sharing, you know, miscellaneous groups are picking up 3.42. And, and even though it's just a chunk, it is a pickup, and it's a nice cost-sharing agreement with those groups. We're seeking additional cost-sharing programs with other unions. We closed the facilities between Christmas and New Year's, and, and that was a savings to the comp absences fund, but that was 100,000. And we, just really good director workshops where everybody's coming to the table. It's a team effort, and, and Dave will go over that. But I'm, you know, I'm new to this group, and I'm just, I'm just very impressed how everybody works together and wants to be part of the solution. And I, I just didn't want to be the doom and gloom, which I usually am, without pulling out, you know, and then our fiscal sustainability plan, I mean, many cities, I was trying to look for examples of fiscal sustainability plan before I came here during my interviews to try to look impressive. And I was hard-pressed to find another city that had a well-documented plan. So, I mean, we're on the right track. We have some more work to do, and, and some hard decisions to make. But I didn't want the hard effort that has happened even before I got here to go unnoticed. Can I answer any questions?
Why don't we go to Dave and have the other part of this discussion, if we can come back. Tracy, that was an excellent presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Tracy. So as noted earlier, this is, hopefully the solutions part of the presentation, so.
Dave, before we get started, there, there are two copies of your portion of the presentation. One, one that's by itself. Is that the one?
I'm going to ask you to look at the one that's by itself. Yeah, we did an update to it, and that's the update. So I, I do want to emphasize the bridge again. This is a, this is a look at, an attempt to bridge the budget gap, and something that's in the sustainability plan, to really restructure the organization for what we see as our own new normal, because times have changed, and they're probably not going to go back to the way they were. And maybe that's a good thing. So this, I'm going to address what I call a five-point plan. It's going to look at reducing operating budget expenditures in the short and long term, adjusting, rethinking our CIP approach, appropriate revenue adjustments. That's code for, I think we are looking at new revenue opportunities, the strategic use of reserves, and then restructuring how that fits in. So those five points. I'm going to come back to those five throughout the next couple of minutes. And these are based on the fiscal sustainability plan. And you'll see in my notes, a little FSP with a number by it, and that refers to the, the line item in the fiscal sustainability plan that asks us to do these things. So of the five-point plan, point one, reduce the operating budget. We're, we're looking at cost sharing with employees. You're going to see street sweeping come back to you. I've seen the preliminary results. Our proposal will be to contract those services out. You're going to look at contracting out our beach trash bins, trash bin collection. The reductions consider controlling overtime better, reducing travel and training and meals costs. There's a public safety contribution to the operational expenditures that's comparable to what happened with E-RIP. Again, E-RIP being the Early Retirement Program. And remember, that wasn't offered to public safety. Some elimination and consolidation of positions, cancellation of inactive encumbrances, elimination or renegotiate consultant contracts, and then look at suspending some special events and programs. And I guess I prefer to call that as putting some of these good things on a hiatus for a short time. So what does this look like? This is a hard chart to read, but this is how we attempt to balance the remainder of this year. If you look at the, at the top, Tracy mentioned the $8 million deficit, the net deficit. I, I'm using a facilities replacement plan contribution from reserves there, and I'm trying to get lower than what, what it was initially proposed. So I'm not going to go down each one of these, but I may come back if you have questions about them. You could see the icon to the right refers to whether this is a reduction in operating costs, an adjustment to CIPs, a new revenue source down there, for instance, a different use of reserves, or the last one is, does it involve restructuring? So you can see a lot of them are operational savings, reduce operating costs in this current year. Again, I'm not going to dwell on many of those. Some of them involve meet and confer issues, but if you have a specific question, please ask. These are as, as a result of my interaction with all the department heads on, everyone brought their budget material, and we said, here's what we think we can bring in by the close of the year.
So on the, the revenue, we're looking at parking?
Yes.
And we are going, proposing going from what to what in the lots, and from what to what on the meters?
I'll, I'll take the ones I know the best. The meters, we'd go to $1.75 an hour.
From?
We're, we're at a dollar an hour.
Oh, no.
So we're splitting the difference. Laguna charges two, and Huntington Beach is 150.
Laguna's, when I go do my guitar lesson, it's 25 cents for 15 minutes.
I think it depends on where you are.
Huh? Oh.
Yeah.
I think it's anywhere from a dollar fifty to $2.
Where I am, where I take it, it's a dollar.
We need to-
I know, because I have my, all my quarters. Okay, but anyway. And then the parking lots?
Parking lots, for instance, Corona del Mar would go up to the state rate on weekends, especially peak weekends. That's $15 per car. That's the state rate. And the Balboa lot has a different, it's, it's a pay-as-you-leave rather than pay-as-you-enter. It's a different rate. I don't know, you have your notes on that, Tracy? I, I don't. We can get that for you, though. I talked about the, the second point of the five-point plan, adjusting the CIP approach. I wanted to remind you what's working. Public Works with Steve and Dave have really been working hard on the benchmarking and performance measurement.
You know, before you pass that, I just want to confirm, go back to-
I thought that was too easy, Mr. Rosansky.
Sorry. So we're, this is how we're going to balance our budget. And on the top here, you talk about contribution from reserves, a million 206, right? But really, a lot of this other stuff is kind of reserves, too, or some fairly large chunks of it. Like the transfers from equipment, sweepers, beach, I mean, that's basically reserves we've had to buy these things that we're now going to use to pay operating expenses.
Well, no, that's different. Appreciate your point, though. Like Mr. Rosansky's talking about this one, transfers from the Equipment Internal Service Fund. So everyone in their budget has an amount that's, that's spent each year from the general fund, and it goes into the Internal Services Fund. When, I wouldn't characterize it a reserve. It's a set aside- a set aside for the purchase of future equipment. If we contract out street sweeping and beach trash trucks, we have one point one eight million sitting in there to buy those two, those items of equipment, which we wouldn't have to buy now, which is why we're proposing returning that back to the general.
No, I understand where the money's coming from, but to me, that's, you can call it whatever you want, but I think that's a reserve fund for buying equipment, and when we make the purchase, we take it out of our equipment reserve and we put it into buying the equipment. It's money we've saved for something else, but it's, you know, to me, it's almost, it's a little different than an operational saving, I guess, like, like where we're talking about recreation, maintenance, and operation cuts, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. That, that's, well, anything under reduced operations, I guess, would be.
Well, it's.
Operations.
It, it, it is a release of reserves.
Yeah.
It's a one-time, permanent reduction in the required level of reserves, but it is different in nature from, from operating expenditures, for example, in that it's not a repetitive item. It's a one-time release of funds.
Right.
As opposed to some of these other things which would be carrying through for additional.
Thus, the characterization to the right.
That's my point.
I see.
I characterize it as a reserve, too.
It's no less valid as a.
Yeah. It's money. No, the money's there. I understand it's going to balance our budget, but some of this stuff, the six point seven two nine million dollars is, some of it's actually spending less on buying things or paying people or doing those kinds of things, and, and some of it's coming out of these reserve accounts that we've set up to, to buy things. I agree, but, but more like capital expenditures where you're buying.
Yeah, but street sweeper will be a savings in future years because we won't be taking it out of operating expenditures.
I, I agree, I mean, going forward, but we will be paying for street sweeping, which I assume a portion of what we're going to pay is going to go towards.
Yeah, here's, here's.
The equipment they're going to use to do the contract.
Here's the difference, here's the difference. The, the, the transfers from, as, equipment ISF of a million one eighty, that, that comprises part of that six point seven million gain. Well, but next year, when we go to do the budget for the following year.
It's not going to be there.
It's not going to be there, so we got to, we got to find another million one eighty to make up for that.
Right. There may be some because the street sweeping, or general services makes an allocation every year of a few hundred thousand dollars, I imagine, towards purchasing equipment replacements, correct?
Correct.
That money will, will see continually.
That's right.
Not this million one eighty.
In addition to, I think, as, as Mr. Solich was noting, the reduction in ongoing operational expense for street sweeping.
Right.
Bids are coming in at, at a really significantly lower level than what we pay.
Okay, but that's different than.
It is.
Okay.
Which is why I point to my silly little chart here on the right, but that does show, these are the things that I characterize as operational reductions. These are the things that I characterize as changes in reserves, so I guess I'm arguing but agreeing with Mr. Ozansky, at least on this point respectfully, so.
I, I guess the bottom line, my point is, it's a significant portion of the six point seven million that we're going to have to find in a different way.
It, it is, and, and I, I know you're not arguing with me, but remember that our, our options would have been to send a lot of people out the door right now to bring the, bring the city budget into balance within this year. What this plan does for me, it allows me to make some of those changes, which actually can involve taking advantage of retirements and vacancies into next year, instead of doing this dramatic layoff procedure this year.
I, I don't disagree with what you've done, and I, actually, I think it's wise that we've done it this way. I just want everybody to understand that that's what we're doing.
Yeah, I.
Appreciate that point.
I have one question. What is considered a non-essential street light?
That's the one in front of your house, Tom.
Well.
But not the one in front of my house.
Right.
I figured I'd get a question from Mr. Webb on this one, and, and Steve may, as I understand it, the essential ones are the ones at intersections. Now, we're not proposing a wholesale turnout of, of streetlights at night, but this isn't part of our restructuring discussion. Should we, should we turn out more of them? Like, think about the, the stretch of.
Think about Corona del Mar. We don't have any.
San Joaquin. And San Joaquin Hills Road between MacArthur and Jamboree. That place is lit up like crazy all hours of the night. Nobody's walking there. Hardly anybody's driving there. Should that be things that are turned off, or every other one turned off? So, we want to look at this, but Steve may have a comment, too, on that.
Yeah, I think, I think we were going to do a test on, George, correct me if I'm wrong, MacArthur and what, Jamboree?
Yeah, the areas that.
Or San Joaquin.
Yeah, the areas where there were pedestrians, the areas where we didn't have a lot to traffic, really, it was just very few, a small percentage of it overall.
Well, check with the attorney's office to make sure that they can adequately support the light levels reduction, that we're going to get expert witnesses coming in on accidents related to our high-speed streets when we have going from light to dark and light to dark. I, I think that it's a relatively small amount of money, and, and I think that if, I personally don't support the impacts for such a small return. So, I just put my two cents in.
I appreciate your point. At the last slide, if we look at next year, you'll see that that's a significant amount of savings when you, because that's just through the close of the year. It, it adds up, and remember, from the public's perspective, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, Newport Beach is one of the few communities that has its own streetlights, and it pays the bill to Edison, where if you were in another community, oftentimes that's owned by Edison, and Edison, through the ratepayer, pays the bill. So, other cities may not be doing this because they don't have control of the lights, and they also don't have the expense.
I, I guess I would chime in to this extent. Councilmember Webb may turn out to be right that some of these things we shouldn't do. What I support is that you're looking at it, and that you're going to come back with a proposal that you think makes sense. That's what we should be doing, is looking at all of these alternatives.
And if we had our druthers, everything would go to LED anyway, and we may have equivalent savings. That's just taking a while to get there. I keep cutting you off, Mr. Webb, sorry.
Well, I just, just one lawsuit wipes out multi-years of savings for streetlights.
And please understand, we're looking at those issues and working with risk management on those issues, and we recognize those and have discussed those issues, and we're not intending to put ourselves on the precipice in exchange for eight to sixteen thousand dollars worth of savings. So, I appreciate your concerns.
So, Dave, looking at this, two to three steps down the, looking at two to three steps down the line after we kind of, you know, get that one-time savings for no more water to city, water jugs to City Hall and so on, then what are you anticipating as far as, you know, some, some really big numbers, whatever, eight million dollar shortfalls?
That's the last slide that we'll talk about.
Okay, then we're getting there, thanks.
Yeah, let's, let's keep Dave focused here. He's on a roll.
So, the next, the next point of the five-point plan, adjusting the CIP approach. I, I won't spend too much time with you on this one, but certainly welcome your input. We think there are a number of things working with our CIP. Certainly, our master plan setup, and you see each one of those items, we have some type of master plan or similar document that guides our investment in those critical infrastructure items. For folks at home, I don't know if you know this, but you can check online, and I'll show you a snapshot of the next screen as to where projects are and learn more about them along with contact information. And then, again, Public Works is one of the major departments involved in benchmarking and performance measurement of their projects. But what could be improved? Well, we've talked about residual fund balances in each project. Where should they go? And we're discussing the concept, again, like your feedback, on a CIP reprogramming fund. So, this is when money is left over in the X pavement project, or X, it's more typically a general fund project. Should they go to other projects that might need resources and/or un- or underfunded project list items that are important to the community of the council that may not be a master plan item? And I know this, the, the community has a lot of interest in, in what we, what we would call checklist items, and, and I guess what I'd, where I'd like to head is some way to help prioritize those checklist items so that you can evaluate them, maybe even against each other. I know it's a daring thing to do, but times are, times are tight, and I think it warrants that kind of scrutiny. So, I'd appreciate your feedback. Maybe not now, but if you had it, that's always welcome. I had to go to the next slide, otherwise. So, this is what residents can look at if they jump on Public Works website. You can learn all about, for instance, the Rhine Channel Wharf repair project, which is underway.
There's an awful lot of wharf work in the ocean there.
Look at that, yeah. No, it's the white part of the ocean, though, so it's.
It did take a little longer than this, and Tony will float, but.
So, the, the next point of the three-point plan, the right revenue approach, and this is increasing fees where the market may suggest it. We talked about parking lots and meters, and they may look at some other fees not reviewed in the last ten years or longer for CPI adjustments. We, we want to enter into purchase agreements with major buyers that may buy products elsewhere, but their anchor is here to help keep the sales tax here. Some come to mind right away. We want to use, we're proposing using what is a countywide authorization amount for ambulance transports. If you're in, in Newport, you, your insurance company pays less today if you're transported by an ambulance, so what we're wondering as well, if we're, are we really, is it our intention to give the insurance companies a better deal? Should the insurance companies pay what the Orange County Healthcare Agency's countywide billable rate is? And this is a discussion between three hundred and fifty dollars and seven hundred dollars.
Are you talking about non-emergency ambulance transport?
It would be any trans, transport involving ambulance, yes.
And how does this affect the, the program we have with our buyer?
It, the subscription service.
Yes, uh-huh.
It, it may not affect it. We would still go after the insurance company for the full billable amount, and the billable amount would just change. Next item is reviewing receivables and taking stronger action for the collection of outstanding receivables. Tracy noted that we have about two million dollars in uncollected receivables out there, and we have to be more aggressive about that. That's, this is a, this is a new normal kind of thing. I'm surprised we haven't been doing this. We want to talk about TOT and study it, discuss it a little bit with Visit Newport Beach, the CBB. Remember, they get eighteen percent. I'm not asking for a specific direction there. I think we, we need to look at our relationship there. I'd like to establish a council policy on special events. You, you, you do have that great group working on special events. That's above a certain threshold. We don't have guidance below that threshold, yet events below that threshold were continually, continuously asked to waive things like the police costs, the general services costs, in some cases, the fire costs, things that really add up. When we, if we take a back-of-the-napkin approach to this, this is anywhere between a quarter of a million and half a million dollars a year that we arguably waive. No other city is quite this patient.
And they have a policy that's very clear-cut, so we have, don't have to sort of invent the wheel each time. Should we, shouldn't we? I think would be so helpful.
So, expect to see that policy again. Your input will be welcome. And then, conducting more frequent external audits of, of groups that receive money from us. So, next, I want to talk, this is a little sidebar for the third point about reserves, because employees asked me about it, so I have a very simple diagram here. This is if you're using your reserves or savings at home. The first step is, let's say you lose your job, then your income declines. If you keep spending the same amount, you would dip into savings to fill the gap, and you bet on getting a great new job. Not a great bet in this economy, so bankruptcy, foreclosure, or homelessness is your result. If you're a city and you do that, your income declines because purchases slow, hotel occupancy fa- falls, and property taxes values, that, property values fall or flatten. Therefore, the city's income declines. If a city spends the same amount, and the city dips into reserves to fill that gap, and the city bets on a robust, fast recovery, that's a big mistake, and then the city manager loses his job. His income declines. You go back to this page.
Yeah, but that's only one job loss.
So, my point is really this slide, that if, if that same thing happens, the city's income declines, the changes in this box where you ratchet back your spending, you realign your programs and purpose, you retain those savings for real emergencies, such as a state seizure of money or some national, natural disaster that affects us, and we assume a more slow tentative recovery, that's outcome then is fiscal sustainability. So, when I hear the argument about, well, why don't you use a lot of reserves for this period, this is why. So, we, we're instead discussing a strategic use of reserves. The fiscal sustainability mention, policy mentions that. And reserves are designed for strategic savings for long-term pre-planned projects and unforeseen financial emergencies. We will, there is a number of reserve, there are a number of reserves, in part, as Councilmember Ozansky pointed out, that we looked at with our Department Director's workshop, that we looked at a number of them and said, gosh, why is that there? Like, there's a video reserve for, to produce new training videos that go out to the public from the fire department and lifeguards when arguably maybe we shouldn't be doing that anymore. So, that's a potential reserve that could come back to us. And then, I want to mention the PERS reserve, that we do have a five million dollars in the PERS reserve. That's established to smooth out changes in PERS rates, and so we're proposing using some of that reserve in the out years, the fiscal year twelve to fourteen, to offset some of those market reserve, market losses, but with a goal of replenishing those in subsequent years. And then, I mentioned that we are proposing using the appropriation reserve to fund some range of facilities financing plan contributions here, from one point two to two point five in two thousand and ten, and two point one to three point eight in, in fiscal year eleven. And I'll show you more about that. I'm almost done here.
If we can just stop for one second, I just, I just want to add one more perspective on your illustration about the city manager losing his job.
Here it is.
Yeah. You know, if the nature of our problem today, if the source of our problem was a one-time event, the Newport pier fell down and we had to replace it, there's an argument there for the use of reserves. Our problem today is not sourced from a one-time event. It is sourced from repeating revenue declines. It's a structural problem, not a one-time problem. And likewise, as you mentioned, the use of this reserve for PERS, the five million dollar reserve that we have, I can understand a scenario in which we would use that. Problem is, if we use it, by the time we finish using it, we better have a solution that we don't have to rely upon the use of those reserves anymore to continue to fund, because that six million dollar increase in pension cost is not just a one-time thing. It's every year, for as far into the future as we can see, long after all of us are cold in our graves, this city is going to be paying that cost. So, this is what I, I keep trying to draw that analogy. When we have a repeating structural gap, it has to be solved with repeating structural savings.
Dave, I've got a question that might be, I don't know, a little uncomfortable, but if I understand correctly, we had years when the PERS earnings were doing so well that we had very little or no PERS contributions that were coming, that the city had to make, so presumably, we had money in those years that we normally would have put into PERS. What did we do with that money in those years?
We banked that money in the facilities replace, facilities financing plan reserve, and there's now twenty-five million in that. Am I correct, Tracy?
And in a contingency.
And, and other places.
Right.
Like the building of that five million dollar PERS reserve.
It built that. We have a stabilization reserve and an appropriation reserve.
If I could just add, you are correct. We, we actually had decreases in negative payments in early years, and in those good years, we were able to build up a really strong reserve policy, and that's why we're even more hesitant to even suggest that we, we dip into that, because it goes really fast. In the early nineties, when we were having our last, you know, economic downturn, the city actually didn't have the strong reserve policies that it has now, and it completely depleted all reserves. So, now with that, that fiscal plan, it's, it's with hesitation that we even suggest using it.
I'm going to start to wrap up now by talking about how restructuring fits in, the fifth point of the five-point plan. First slide is about short-term. There, there's not always savings in these items, but you'll see next month now, the building and planning Public Works proposal that I've been working on with Jan Perkins, our interim assistant city manager. You'll see in, after early retirement, much fewer single-duty jobs. I'm sure the public is surprised that we have single-duty jobs, but, but we do. So, so more multitasking, how we, how can we, asking ourselves, how can we maximize capacity within existing staff? And what about seasonal changes? Are there seasonal aspects to our work? Yes. And can, can we maximize that staff that may have a downtime in different seasons in, in other areas? So, we're looking aggressively at that. So we're looking aggressively at that. We're asking the council for earlier decisions about key priorities and projects. For instance, next month, we'd like to know about some of your interests that I think traditionally have been checklist items. And as we mentioned, maybe developing a scoring system for you to prioritize vital projects. Next bullet, again, in the short term, is strengthen our existing policies about meals, travel, training, cell phones, encumbrances, contracting, and budget adjustments. And I think Tracy comes from a perspective that's different from ours, which has been good, to have those policies reviewed.
How does the city currently purchase cell phones? Is it done by department, or how does that?
We, go ahead.
It's centralized through our IT group, but it's up to each department director. So we do have a policy, and it's actually being updated right now by Human Resources and our IT, with IT information. So it's not consistent across the board, and it's pretty much up to each department director. So we're trying to rein that in and put in a standard. Also, they're allowed to kind of buy any one of a number of types of cell phones, and if they don't like it, they can turn it in. So we're just going to strengthen that up and make it a city standard, because we don't really have that right now. But we are working on strengthening that.
And then a question on contracting, because I know the council doesn't see a lot of the contracts. What, I mean, what is kind of maybe a ballpark estimate of what we're spending on consultants every year?
We have to get that for you. I'm hesitant to guess.
Okay.
It's a significant amount. I'm going to go next to the longer-term restructuring, and this I'm proposing to do as much as I can in the coming fiscal year. We need to review fleet maintenance. If we have less personnel and we're doing different things, we should have less cars, less vehicles, arguably. We want to review our facility maintenance. The way we maintain facilities now may be to have that brought under one roof, because right now, a lot of different people are on a lot of different contracts to maintain facilities, and may not be the best way to do it. We don't think there's enough review of that. We have to ask ourselves how technology will change us. Can it help us reduce paper and phone costs? We need to do a class and compensation study citywide. It's been a long time. I think one was done when I first started here, back 12 years ago, but, gosh, a lot of things have changed since then. And then develop our compensation philosophy. Where do we want to be in the marketplace? We need to make some tough decisions about some things, such as the helicopter, right? That is on the table. It's on the table in Costa Mesa, too, to talk about whether that should be done differently or not at all. I know that's a significant thing to think about. Labor and pension reform, we've talked about this a little bit. Certainly, we'll be watching what the state does, as well as dealing with our own negotiations. If the state voters adopt pension reform in November, there's three different measures out there. That will change things a lot. I want to have a dialogue with you about flexible schedules. I don't think it's working very well right now, yet it's an employee benefit that I think is important to folks who may not be getting salary increases for a long time. So I don't want to dwell on it now, but I'd like your input on that at some point soon. We need to continue to review more flexible use of our support and analytical capacity. And this basically means things like our admin analysts. These are top-level paid positions, and not everyone at the department has one. Maybe we could do with less with attrition, and share them across departments. Similar with our reception folks, how will this, how will we be receiving public, the public in the new city hall? I mentioned IT, maybe some consolidation and cost containment there. Internal services fund charges, we mentioned that a little bit. We're looking at our warehouses and purchasing practices. So a lot on our list here. And finally, but uncertainty remains, like where is the national and state regional economy headed? What will the state do? We need to open Oasis this fall, and it's got to be a great facility. So our budget plan anticipates that. We're certainly anxious to see the pricing and the timing on the big CIP projects and the FFP. And then labor negotiations, we need to stay competitive, but the current pension system, as Airport Tim Hen is indicating, is unsustainable. I should take out the maybe. It is unsustainable. Then finally, I do have a chart on what balancing the budget looks like in 2010, 11. You'll see a number of items under restructuring. You'll see very few that affect reserves, because as Mr. Rosansky noted, those are one-time things. You'll see a lot in this column here that are reduced operations. For instance, police, after retirements and reassignments, we're looking at saving 1.1 million. Those are positions. Fire, same thing, 850,000. So I don't want to get into this too much. It's something we're working on. I have a 2.5 million left to work on. That may involve negotiations and further employee suggestions. And then this is some of the increased revenues on an annualized basis. And I can get close to that with only drawing in 2.1 for the FFP from reserves. So this is my work plan for the budget that you'll adopt over the next coming months. So with that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dave, and thank you, Tracy. I think that was a very comprehensive review of where we are financially, and I appreciate the detail that has gone into this presentation. I think it needs to be noted that our employees and our department heads working with Dave and Tracy generated many of the ideas that were presented today, and I think they ought to be commended for that, and for their willingness to sort of think of new ways to be outside of the box in terms of cutting the budget. It is very clear from the presentation today that we have an issue that's going to require difficult choices, and the sooner we make those choices, the better we're all going to be. And I appreciate the fact that Dave's applied our brand-new fiscal sustainability plan to identify a policy directions, so that we can do this in a way that's absolutely going to be effective. You know, I said Friday that by the end of the year, we're going to have a city government that's leaner, more efficient, more effective, and better managed than when we started this year. And I think Dave and Tracy have outlined a roadmap of how we're going to get there. It's going to involve working with our bargaining groups, and I appreciate the efforts that they're making, and that need to be made, to shoulder some of the cost on pensions. As you can see, that has been the one-time bomb that is going to have a continued ripple effect on our budget if we don't get a handle on it, and just has to be addressed effectively. And we're starting, and we need to, we need to continue to move and do more on that. And I think these other items are going to result in a more efficient city government as well. So I appreciate all that has gone into doing this. And the sooner we get to it and make these specific adjustments, the better we're all going to be. So I thank you for the presentation today. Are there any further questions? Mr. Hen.
Yeah, I think you and staff are making tremendous progress in a very short period of time to address these issues. And so you're, I'd add my commendation to you for that. And I, having said that, I'd have to also say, I've still got an uneasy feeling here, because we've made assumptions about revenue increases, but we've made no assumptions about inflationary cost increases in compensation and in regular maintenance expenditures. And we still got 2.5 million even with those assumptions that we're trying to find. So I'm still uneasy about where we are in the process, and that's okay, because we're still in the middle of the process. But there's plenty of work to do, and this is by no means a full solution at this juncture, in my view, so. But thanks again for all your efforts so far. It's been very courageous.
I wonder if there's something that our residents could help with? I mean, I think we have a pocket park out right in front of my house, and we water it. The city doesn't water it, we do. And I, I just soon mull it, I mean. And are there opportunities? If residents had opportunities, saw something, and they thought, well, it's silly for the city to come over here, it'd be easy for me to do it, would it be possible? I know we always run into concerns about insurance and that sort of thing, but I sometimes think that people would like an opportunity if they had it, and at least have a place where they could bring it up and have somebody look at it as an idea and evaluate it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. The other thing, I haven't reached out to the community at all about volunteering, and HR and the city attorney's office will remind me that a volunteer role is appropriate if you're not replacing a staff member, but certainly potentially using them as adjunct staff, but filling in and helping out and doing some other tasks. And I think the things you suggest, Councilmember Gardner, are great ideas, and I think that's probably something we should work on with the website and transmit that information. If you have an idea from the community, you could submit that, and we can take a look at it, because there could be some opportunities, even to save half an hour on a route somewhere, or all of that helps.
I would suggest they all sign up for the Adopt a Beach program and clean the beach.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. It was an excellent report. The next item is the electronic display sign for Corona Del Mar.
Mr. Curry, I don't know if anyone had any public comments on that item.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Do we have public comments on the budget discussion? Thank you. All right. Seeing none, electronic display sign for Corona Del Mar.
I introduce Katie Bowden, our Economic Development Department.
Good evening. In July, Councilwoman Gardner asked staff to research the viability of a permanent display sign at the intersection of Marguerite and East Coast Highway in Corona Del Mar. Staff, since that time, has met and quickly determined that an electronic display sign seemed to be the best alternative, because it solved both the aesthetic concerns that we were hearing from the community, as well as the concern for the first-come, first-served competition for displaying events in that location. Staff took a look at the feasibility of installing a sign at that location, an electronic sign, and it looks like it'll work. The cost will be anywhere from $30,000 to $35,000, depending on any design options that council might like, including a capstone that would likely need further design. And we're here just to seek direction from the council. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions for Katie? Councilmember Gardner?
This is something that, in particular, the bid has been interested in, because they've spent so much money in beautifying those medians, and the banners that we have right now, they do look tacky. I mean, they've just got two poles, and the poles sink in and everything, and it's, we've gotten quite a few comments on that. I had just said, let's come up with something. The electronic one does do some things that we could add, more than one event listed, but I am concerned when I see the dollars, because we are looking at all the dollars right now. Did staff give any consideration to other alternatives?
We did, but I will say that we didn't spend a lot of time on the other alternatives. We looked at Carlsbad. They have a special event signage. I can even pass out an example to you. We didn't think that it really went with the look that we've tried to create in Corona Del Mar. It didn't really have a very high-end appeal, but it might be better than the bed sheet that it currently exists. So I'll pack these out.
Mr. Selch.
Thank you, Mayor Curry. Yeah, I'm not really wild or actually in favor of the electronic sign option. I think it kind of flies in the face of the village character that Corona Del Mar's tried to create there. And if we're going to have signs in the medians, I'd just as soon see us come up with some kind of program where we had standard design requirements for the signs, some kind of permanent pole system to mount the signs on, something that would look a little bit more Corona Del Mar, and not so much Las Vegas-ish, Las Vega-ish, or however you'd say it, like Las Vegas, like an electronic sign would be. So those would be my comments on it. I'd kind of like to see us look at some other alternatives rather than electronic sign.
Mr. Webb.
I, too, agree with that. I think that this is like the tip of the iceberg, and an electronic sign for Corona Del Mar is, would be nice. But do we put one out in front of city hall to remove the signs that are, quote, tacky there? I wouldn't mind having one on the bridge over near my house, where there are a lot of banners posted, or the corner of the fire station at Mariners and Irvine Avenue, I mean, not Mariners, Dover and Irvine Avenue, where we have signs hung. So I think that perhaps this is a very expensive item for one area of the city, that if we start going down this road and we try to replace all of our temporary signs with this type of signage, we have a very significant expenditure over the years. And so I can put up with a little tacky.
All right, Councilmember Daigle.
One thing that I heard from the community is they felt as if the city's kind of hunkered down in terms of who gets to display their sign. And I'd like to learn a little bit more about what those protocols are when we bring it back, you know, if we have standards, and what community groups get to, get to display their messages and how that all works.
Councilmember Gardner?
I don't disagree with what's been said. I do want to see something better-looking than what we've got. And whether it's a wooden structure that banners can be attached to, that makes them all look better, and they're all standard, and we have better controls, that would be fine. As I say, when I saw this, and particularly when I saw the price, I was just going, oh, that's a lot of money for right now. The only difficulty we've had is that, in terms of Corona Del Mar, that occasionally there's been a conflict, and Corona Del Mar hasn't been able to advertise its own event. And so maybe it's time to look at all of those requirements and see if we can focus on that the local community gets first crack, even if there, if there's a time period, but it's well, everybody knows it well, and so there's not a conflict. And the Corona Del Mar 5K can be always advertised on the Corona Del Mar median, despite what else is going on in the city at that time. So maybe we can do both of those things. But I have no problem with just looking at something a little less high-tech, but something certainly an upgrade from what we've got now.
Mayor Prokhorin Hen?
Yeah, to Councilmember Webb's point about the cost and replicating that cost across the city, this seems like a pretty unique item to Corona Del Mar. And in that event, and I, but I think his point is valid, and in that event, then, it seems to me, if there really is a very strong feeling on the part of the bid, or even the resident association, that they need something like this, then maybe they would want to consider funding sources to pick up the cost, you know?
I don't think that would be a problem. I was just getting the sense that the city would agree to it, and particularly if it's not really expensive, I think that the bid might want to allocate some funds for that. It's certainly something we would explore.
I would just say for my part, that while I want to be deferential to Councilmember Gardner on this issue, I share Mr. Selch's concerns about the suitability for this for the neighborhood, and I think Councilmember Gardner has outlined some other alternatives that may be more appropriate for the site. So are there any further comments or questions? Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this matter? Are there any public comments on any matter not on the agenda? We stand adjourned.